Okay, I will call the August 11 meeting to order at 7:05. If you would please write for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America and the Republic.
Flagation of their values.
Indivisible, fluid, just as for all.
Yes, so we got this. This is gonna be interesting, guys. We are doing the hybrid and we will get through this unscathed. So our first order is approval of the agenda. The one thing I would like to do is table the 3010 because that is not ready yet. I think there are formatting issues and a couple of other things. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to table the policy 3010.
Kristina Plor, I motion to table policy 3010, the H1 item under Superintendent's report.
Jacob Mari's second.
Okay, this is gonna be a little bit more difficult. So we have, so I see Rainey is holding her hand up, so.
You could start.
I just, before we approve the agenda, I thought we might want to consider adding on into board action, moving the date for the approval of the TURF agreement to like the end of October. I know we said we would, you know, it would kind of expire at the end of August, but given the town manager's resignation, I think we're having trouble getting a date with the town council. So they've requested a little bit more time to get us on the agenda and I don't want the agreement to expire. So I, we don't, I don't know if we have to do it now, but we don't have another meeting. Well, we do have a meeting on the 25th, so either now or then, I think we should at least talk about extending our approval of that to give them time to let us talk about it.
I think that would be a good add for the August 25th meeting.
Okay.
Write up a little thing and also contact the town council to get any dates that are available and go from there. So.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So back to tabling the 3010, which is a motion on the floor. Any other discussion at this time from board members? Okay, then we will still do a roll call vote because that way it'll be easy for Lisa, who is now in the room with us, to write it all down. So.
I'm sorry, Ashley, it's Dana. It paused, so I didn't hear. I was kicked off for the actual motion, so I don't want to vote on something that I don't know what the motion was. My apologies.
We are going to table the 10 because we, it's just not quite ready yet. There was a couple of formatting issues and things of that nature. We're voting on to just table policy number 3010. And then we will do the roll call vote. So we will start here. Jacob?
Aye.
Preston?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll go here. So then Rainey?
Aye.
Bea?
Emma?
Madhu?
Aye.
Aye.
I as well, therefore we will be tabling the policy 3010 at this time. Okay, I will entertain a motion for approval of minutes for the July 14, 2021, and the August 2 of the 2021.
Kristina Plor, I motion to approve the minutes for July 14, 2021, and August 2, 2021, special meeting.
Jacob Mari's second.
Okay, any discussion, any corrections at this time, any board members? Okay, we will do the roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Let's go here. Rainey?
Aye.
Olivia?
Aye.
Madhu?
Aye.
Dana?
Aye.
My eye as well, therefore the minutes are approved as is. At this time, we will do the public participation. Please list your name and your address for the record. You will have two minutes to discuss anything that you would like and we will have the points of information which the board members can say anything and if not, then we can also wait and talk about it after. So at this time, Jacob will do the time for two minutes. Once again, just a reminder, name, first name, last name. This is all crazy. Any public participation? Okay, I will go down the list here. Rebecca?
Great, thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening. Currently, the United States is averaging 116,000 new COVID cases per day. That's the highest it's been in six months and this is during summer with outdoor activities being prevalent. Logically, what do you think will happen if we put kids inside 20 to 28 bodies in a room without masks and social distancing? Rates for hospitalizations and deaths have doubled in the last two weeks across our country. Why would anyone want to remove a layer of protection that mitigates risk for our children? I realize no one enjoys wearing a mask. No one would want to do it if there wasn't a compelling reason. But it's the right thing to do for our kids and community and often doing the right thing rather than the easy thing or the thing that you desire for yourself, it means doing the hard thing and the necessary thing. The thing that requires sacrifice and looking beyond your limited worldview and self-gratification. Often what's best is rarely what's easiest. How is the Board of Education in Town of Tallin prepared to deal with potential litigation and loss of grants if they decide to forego a mask mandate? How are you going to keep my child and every other child safe when the children of anti-maskers remove and refuse to wear their masks as their parents are directing them to do? 314 children under 18 in the US have died from COVID-19 since the beginning of the pandemic. Many more struggle with long-hauler issues or yet to be identified long-term problems. Some people might hear that number, 314 dead, and say, well, that's acceptable if my kid doesn't have to wear a mask. Is it acceptable if your child, your child's friend, your neighbor's kid is part of that number? I, for one, choose to use all the tools at my disposal to avoid that for my child and for yours. To the anti-maskers who think that we're not listening to you, we are listening, but we're not willing to put our children and community at risk by taking away a proven method of protection. Those aren't odds I'm willing to risk and children that we're charged with protecting are not political pawns or fodder for survival of the fittest ideals. Please do the right thing for our community. Continue masking until more children are eligible.
All you.
They may not be able to.
Yeah, no, we have to ensure that the two minutes are being stuck to and if it's not going and people are gonna start going over, we will close the public participation, just so that everybody.
Mr. Mari, your timing, right?
Yes.
Article with the 10, 10 seconds.
I, I will say real quick, like when you're saying the 30 seconds, if you're remote, you can't hear that.
It's hard because.
Crap, I couldn't hear that. I'm curious when I was muted.
Is, if you could do a visual as well, because your box, if you talk last, will show up like right now. And then you can also do a hand signal, so that that way.
It's gonna be awkward for you to say it loudly, but you should probably say, 20 seconds, 10 seconds, so this picks you up?
Okay. Yeah, because like literally all that happens is it just cuts out and we can't hear.
Yeah. Another thing, Dr. Willett, maybe why we have, and actually why we have public participation, do we want to take the agenda down just so that the people remote can see the entire room better? Maybe they can see or hear Jacob's, because it is, it is difficult. I did not hear it. So I don't know if we want to take the agenda down for a hot minute, so you guys can get bigger on our screens.
It'd be helpful.
I just had a really big.
Oh, that is a lot, that is a.
Yeah, I just had a really big Madhu. Okay, thank you.
As much.
Now, is our, is our room actually viewable?
Now I'm all self-conscious.
Because what are they seeing?
They're gonna see, the screen keeps moving around.
So here, I can take a picture and send it to you if you want and tell you, show you what it is that we're seeing.
What they see.
Now we see a Jacob and a Dr. Willett and then I see you all on top.
I make this one, the fewer of the individual pictures you can see.
That's okay, because we only need the person who's speaking.
So, so here's, here, when, when it's people speaking in person, it's the owl view. When it's someone who's remote speaking, it's the person who's remote.
I have to be able to do this because you won't see the hands.
Well, I see, I have that too. Your. Because my.
I might need to mute too, so.
Yeah, no, you definitely, I mean, you are controlling this from, so this, you're, this is on your computer controlling. So you need to do what you need to see, but we don't need the agenda for everybody.
Yep, got it. Yeah, sometimes, as courtesy, I used to do that. I'll just, maybe just stick to the screen.
Yeah.
Okay. So I might be allowed, but I'm not.
Jacob, I want you to yell.
Yeah, it won't be, it won't be like.
It's literally, it's literally the only way we're gonna hear you.
Okay, so see now it has the three of us on here. So Jacob, wave your hand. Oh, it doesn't do motion, it just does sound.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, it's just talking.
Okay, so we're gonna laugh with Jacob.
Yes.
Find you.
I will try. I'll find it.
Okay. Think we're, I think we're good. So let's go to the second. Brenda?
Hello. Um, Brenda Felussy for Laurel Ridge Road. Making decision about school in the fall should not be a heart-wrenching decision. Our kids should not have more stress in their lives than passing a math test or grabbing a seat next to their friends at lunch. Let me tell you what is heart-wrenching. Having your pediatrician say to you, I'm sorry, Mrs. Felussy, and not be able to look you in the eye. Knowing that each time your child gets injured or ill, there will be a longer road to recovery than her peers. For example, a 24-hour flu will make her sick for over a week. And in some cases, there will be permanent or long-lasting damage to her body and it just accumulates. It's a cumulative disease. I have always had the support and backing of the entire school system for the care of my child. She has a rare chronic disease called mixed connective tissue disease. There is no cure. There is only a slow, constant decrease in the quality of her life that unfortunately gets impacted greatly when she is ill. Mrs. Grambling was there when she started her journey through her many doctors and tests. Mrs. Young was there when she broke her leg and started sliding into more physical symptoms. Nurse Rose was there when Sophia would be nauseous for hours, days, or weeks after her monthly treatments. Mr. LeBlanc was there when she would miss days, weeks of school because she just could not get out of bed in the morning or we had to bring her to an out-of-state specialist or to physical therapy. Mr. Janine was there to advocate for my daughter, ensuring that she was able to keep up with her peers. And there are so many more people in this town public school system who are there for us. Now I face the heart-wrenching decision of putting my trust for her in you, in her community, and in her peers. My daughter is fully vaccinated. However, with the rare disease, there is just, isn't enough data available to let me know what will be safe for her this fall. Will you be there for me when she comes home telling me that some of her peers weren't wearing masks and stating they were not vaccinated? Will you be there next to me when she takes her COVID tests if she gets sick? Will you be there with me on those sleepless nights, wondering if the people will come together as a community to protect her? Will you offer her a safe place to eat away from people who may be carriers? And if heaven forbid she catches COVID, will you be next to me discussing her treatment options, listening to her doctors tell me what, that they just don't know how this will impact her? I don't know how to convince you all that protecting our children is in our best interest. I implore you to do everything in your power to do so. Thank you.
This isn't working. Everyone, this is going over two-minute timelines and this is not.
Can I make a suggestion? If you put up instead of the agenda, a two-minute timer to show, when you share the screen, people would be able to see that two-minute timer and be able to see it.
Do you not see Jacob waving his phone?
No.
No, no, I can be a timer remote if you want and we can try that. I don't know.
When I'm talking, when I'm talking, my speaker won't pick up anybody else from this side. So e- even if you guys, the rest of the remote people can hear it, whoever the speaker is, isn't going to hear someone interrupt them.
So I guess, yeah, Dana, if you wanted to do the two minutes and then that way, you know, just.
We'll try, I mean, we can try it and.
There's no harm in trying it.
Walt's got this. He's professional.
I am. Let's see if that goes. Okay, go ahead, work. Okay, so I'm gonna share this screen.
Okay, so we got, we have, so look at us, see? We're coming right along.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Yeah, that was great.
Okay, you guys see the timer?
So no, not.
Oh, no, no, we can't.
It has a lag, so I'm trying to, just works a little slower than. Suck. So I'm gonna share the screen, grab the timer. Okay, so this timer will start it and it gets, as it gets down to zero, that will be the end of all speakers, each speaker's time. So hopefully you'll see it and it'll be a little easier this way.
Okay, yes, much better.
Countdown clock, I think this is good now. Now my participant, okay, so now I'm back up here. Okay, so I will go to the next person in line. It's Catherine McDonald.
Catherine, can you hear us?
It just looks like she's still muted. Oh.
Hello, Catherine?
I can't unmute.
Got it, you're there.
Yeah, we're hearing you now.
Here, yeah.
Thank you, I couldn't unmute myself. Catherine McDonald, 47, Shenepset Lake Road. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I was able to review the minutes and as a perinatal therapist here in town, I've had the privilege of working with a lot of moms over the past 18 and a half months, the entirety of the pandemic. And so I've been unfortunately more up to date than I want to be on the COVID-19 progression and children who are too young to be vaccinated. As a mom of four children who are too young to be vaccinated, three of whom entering town public schools this year, I just wanted to make sure that everybody feels really aware of where this disease is progressing and what I'm hearing from parents and as a parent, my own concerns. In the last week, the AAP has reported 94,000 cases in children and that's up from 72,000 one week earlier. Well, Connecticut has a low rate, low-ish rate compared to some other states of a 3% positivity rate. The positivity rate among children is varying from 4 to 20%. And I tried, I called CCMC, I tried to get some state-specific statistics on children. But the reality is the rates are going up and our children are not contained in classrooms yet. I think it's only gonna go up from here. And we need to all do our part to protect immunocompromised children like Brenda was speaking about, as well as children who may be at risk for co-infections as flu season and RSV season approach. And I hope that we as a community can come together and do something simple and harmless. It isn't going to impact your long-term health to mask up going into the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Let's go to the first Julie. I'm assuming that's maybe the same person, just on two devices. Same picture.
Hi, Julie Brennan, 127 Ellington Road. Reading a letter from Dr. Rebecca Robinson at 38 Fieldstone Drive. Good evening, I'm sorry I'm unable to attend as I'm working tonight. I am, I am a board-certified doctorally-prepared acute care nurse practitioner and have been a flight nurse for the past 13 years. I have three teenage sons who are my greatest accomplishments. My medicine and parenting are based on evidence, both scientific and trial and error. My views on COVID are the same. The evidence is staggering related to the ineffectiveness and harmfulness of wearing masks specifically in our K-12 population despite the evidence for all age ranges. Viruses replicate, outsmarting the scientists and vaccines. influenza is a highly contagious virus for which there is a vaccine, but it's a par at best. The vaccine is estimated to be less than 40% effective and variable as the virus mutates year to year. Why weren't we ever under lockdowns, curfews, and required to wear masks for that? The flu has proven to be more deadly than coronavirus. Yes, COVID is contagious, as are many other respiratory viruses. We will never be free of them, nor will we ever get to zero cases. The goal should be to find responsible ways to learn to live with it. Vaccines are a start. They have proven to decrease symptoms and they do not prevent disease, but help the body to recognize it and fight it more effectively. The masks that our kids are being required to wear are not scientifically tested or proven to prevent the spread of COVID. Where were they tested? Where is the data showing their effectiveness in preventing respiratory pathogens from penetrating your neighbor's mask? There's none that I'm aware of. The best things to do is to maintain good hygiene, take precautionary measures, and learn to live with this virus. There will always be more viruses. I urge you to allow parents to make decisions that are best for their kids. This is no different than educating our kids about responsible behaviors to peer pressure, drinking and driving, drugs, etc. We as parents make choices for our kids every day. Using experience and data to make evidence-based decisions is called parenting. Let the parents parent and make masks optional, please. Thank you, Dr. Rebecca Robinson.
Julie, is that the second and are you on two devices?
There's another Julie, but I have a question for you. Am I able to talk for myself as well?
Yeah, no, your two minutes are up, so I'm gonna go to the next person.
What even, okay, okay.
Yeah. The next Julie.
Hi, good evening. This is Julie Kleinberg at 35 Stephanie Lean. And I would like to see masks optional for this school year. I am concerned for my kids' health and well-being. We all want to do what is right for our kids. Parents should be allowed to prioritize the health, safety, and well-being of their own children. For some, this means mask-wearing. For others, this means not wearing masks, especially long-term mask use. I am convinced that wearing a mask for more than seven hours every weekday is not healthy. It's not healthy for my children either physically or mentally. That is why it is important to let each family be able to determine what's best for their children. Mask-wearing comes with many costs. I found a plethora of information on this, which I will also forward to you, but just to highlight a few. Mask-wearing interferes with vision and concentration in school. It's been shown to cause headaches, to lower oxygen levels, weakening immune function. Many masks are made with toxic chemicals that will be inhaled by the wearer. Many kids don't stay properly hydrated while wearing a mask. Their social development and mental health also suffers. In order for the kids to be forced to wear a mask, I feel that it must be proven to be safe, effective, and necessary to justify all the side effects. But cloth face coverings have been shown to allow more than 90% of viral particles to move freely through and may even increase infection risk by retaining moisture. A January 2021 study involving 100,000 students and staff says 99.968% of children do not get COVID from school. The single best prevention measure is still proper hand washing and keeping sick kids home. The one-size-fits-all mask order does not make sense and science doesn't support healthy people wearing masks. I wanted to end by saying that my fifth grader was asked by his doctor today if he was excited for school to start and if he was looking forward to fifth grade and he said, no, this is 100% due to the mask as he has always enjoyed being in school and stated to the doctor when she asked because I have to wear this and pointed to his mask. And thanks so much for the opportunity to speak up.
Thank you very much, Julie. Let's go to Jennifer Galloch.
Hi there, Jen Galloch at 150 Timber Trail. I just wanted to say, knowing masks would be a big topic again tonight, that I think it's been very apparent that all the members of the board sympathize with parents on both sides of this situation and that I personally appreciate that. As you have all explained, this decision is not yours to make, so it must be very difficult for you all to discuss it when you are not the experts providing the guidance. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Let's go to.
Hi, this is Heather McCann, 62 Crosson Drive. Thanks for letting me just give a couple of, of points here. Excuse me one second. It is really sad that we are at odds about the safety of our kids and as members of us society, we are responsible for one another. Wearing a mask is a way that we can take care of one another. Every single child in town public schools under the age of 12 are unable to have that choice to get vaccinated. Until that changes, the only logical way to ensure that all of our school population, ensure that all of our school population is to have universal masking inside the school buildings. We have the Delta wave surging through the country, with children and adults getting hospitalized at frightening rates in the South. I, for one, do not want to see that here in Connecticut. Children look to us to protect them. The only way we can protect them is to have them wear masks. At this time, there is no option for remote learning, so our most vulnerable population will have no choice but to go to school or to do homeschooling. If we do not mask, there could and might be legal repercussions from the district or the district. At the very heart of the issue is the safety of our children and our community. I feel fairly comfortable in asserting that no one here would be okay with any of our children or our community members dying. I'd like to invite all the parents and residents who feel unhurried or that can come from a mild inconvenience of wearing a mask.
I don't know if she got.
Heather, we might have lost you here in the last minute or 10 seconds.
Oh, I, I, yep, I think you did. It's okay, I was all, I was all set. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and I appreciate all the hard work and, and I realize that this really isn't falling on your hands, but just an opportunity to hear everybody's voice. Thank you.
There you go. We're gonna hang up this.
A hardum for my eyes.
It's all good. Myron?
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Can you, can you hear me? Okay, great, thanks. Myron Minthuay, 468 Old Stafford Road. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add one thing to sort of what people have been saying about masks, certainly. There's, you know, there's costs to weigh, wearing masks versus not wearing masks. The thing that I wanted to add is that I have a six-year-old and were masks, if masks were to be made optional, it wouldn't really be, you know, on my advice to wear a mask, I, my six-year-old would not be wearing one. I mean, if their friends are not wearing, or yeah, if some of their friends are not wearing masks and they don't see a need to do it through that, they're not going to be wearing one. They were in a preschool setting where masks were optional and no children wore masks. So that's just something I wanted to point out as far as, I don't think, I think making masks optional sort of, I don't know, at least presents an opportunity to make a choice and make a decision, but I don't think, I don't think my decision for my family would actually sort of come to fruition in that scenario. It's just something that I wanted to, to mention. All right, all right, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Myron. If there's anyone else at this time would like to speak, please raise your hand. If not, I will close up the public participation and we will move on to the correspondence. Okay, let's go ahead and go to correspondence.
All right, speak up. So we had quite a lot of emails the past month because we weren't in session at the end of July, so I'll go through it right now. We had an email thanking the board for congratulating this account or this cone, our inventor.
Account.
Account, okay, on her invention. Additionally, on the mask subject, the board received 11 emails from 10 different authors asking that masks be optional for the upcoming school year. The board also received 22 emails from 15 different people in support of keeping masks mandatory for the upcoming school year. We had an email from a parent asking how to register her student for school, an email showing the board a joint statement issued by several different entities on the importance of culturally responsive education, an email expressing opposition to weekly COVID testing at schools, an email from a resident that expressed a number of very concerns, an email concerning a controversial incident in town and how the town council's statement on racism might be used to address the incident, and finally, an email with links to equity resources.
Thank you, Jacob. Okay, at this time, I'll open up the board members for points of information. I will, anyone here can actually physically raise your hand? Go ahead, Plor.
Hello?
Does the owl recognize?
Does the owl recognize me?
Oh, it is.
Hi, everyone. I just want to thank everyone for coming out and speaking, no matter what side of the fence you're on regarding the masks. I think that I've read all the emails, I've heard a lot of different opinions, I know it's a polarizing subject. But at the end of the day, the Department of Health is going to be making the decision. Really, any advocacy from us is really our own personal advocacy. That's it.
Thank you, Mark. Any other board members at this time? I'm scoping out the online world in, in here. Okay. Okay, let's move on. Oh, do we have student representatives yet on here?
Not tonight.
Not tonight, so we.
They probably won't be attending.
Until September.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will skip that. And so, Dr. Willett, we will be moving on to H2, the policy 9010. So we will skip that. And so, Dr. Willett, we will be moving on to H2, the policy 9010.
All right, everyone. So policy 9010, as you can see in H2, it's in the board packet. It's available online. I would normally kind of display it on the screen, but I'm gonna just talk. It makes it easier.
I guess you could just play it at this point, because now we don't have multiple people in the mix.
Okay, so, into the agenda. Okay, so...
We're still good, everyone? Thumbs up?
Yep, still good.
Scroll to that item. Okay, so if we just take a quick look at your screen, you'll see the policy 9010, making slight adjustments to this policy. It's an amendment of two lines, essentially, just to bring it into alignment with the SNG's requirements or SNG's model policy. So striking to consider and adopt an annual budget prepared and recommended by the superintendent of schools, and say to consider and adopt an annual budget as prepared by the superintendent. It's just a slight language difference. Then E, to establish policy for employment promotion, dismissal of personnel in accordance with state statutes and employment contracts, replacing it with to establish policy for employment promotion and dismissal of personnel in accordance with state statutes. The thought being that state statutes override everything. So, you know, you can just end it with state statutes. Essentially, these are the only two changes to policy 9010. It has been reviewed by the policy committee and is here for the Board of Education's first review.
Okay, at this time, this is the first read. So does anyone have any questions in the room? And online? Okay, I think we're looking good. And please stop me if somehow, like, somehow I don't catch someone. Because I'm trying. Okay, so Dr. Willett, thank you very much for that, for the first read. So we will move on to the H3, the 2022 VOE meeting dates.
So H3, annually, the Board of Education around this time posts its dates for the coming year. So this gives everybody a chance to plan, put those in their calendar, not only Board of Education members, but also those in the community that want to attend. So you'll notice that ours go through December of '21, and it picks up from there, and you'll see January. It's generally the second and fourth Wednesday of each month with a couple of exceptions. And then you'll notice the highlights with respect to the asterisks are the meetings that we will typically cancel. So you'll remember that we canceled the July meeting this year, just like typically happens. So that has an asterisk on it. Otherwise, this is very straightforward, just a review of the dates, and when the Board of Education is ready, moving into action. And this is the first review of the dates. So we would have a second August 25th, if so desired.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Because I do remember having a conversation about that November date being so close to Thanksgiving and people being away, but that November, yeah, 20... I'm looking at the one year, looking at our year. This word is...
Yeah, November 30th is moved to after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
In response to, I think, what you all might have been concerned about.
No, that's perfect. Okay, any other questions from board members?
Brief one. Just give us kind of like a shorter window for the budget by at least a couple of days. That's just...
Well, we add in the, we add in the budget meetings. Those are always like the special ones that we add.
You have about three or four of them.
Oh, yeah. I just think it was like, it seems like it's a little less timed than normal.
No, it's always, we always schedule the two, but then we always add in like...
Yeah, I mean, like, the, the amount of days between when we get the budget presented and when we need to vote on it, because it needs to go for the council on February 5th.
Because usually it's February 10th, February 11th.
All right. I mean, that's my only thing with it, but it's not a huge deal.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, Julie is also add one prior to, we really feel, you know...
We do build in a few, and you can add as many as you want.
Yeah, but at least this gives you that starting number two, which is so is that second.
Yeah.
Any other questions, guys? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to the H4, the COVID update.
Do we want to, do we want to vote on this, or is this, or do we want to move it to board action?
Yeah, have the first read.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was, I was reading under the board desired action, so my bad.
Yeah, I think next time we can vote on it when it comes up.
Okay, sorry about that.
Now, do you, this had no attachment, but I could probably make it available here real quick online for people to see the COVID update.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so it'll take me just a second.
Right now, it shows the RAF.
Okay, so what we have for H4 is the COVID update. At the time, there was no attachment because the Department of Public Health meeting had yet to occur. So we, we were holding off on a, a, you know, a document being posted until now. But this document will be added online, and constitutes the updates for this Board of Ed meeting for August 11th. In the DPH meeting and in recent meetings, information was clarified about what the expectations are of the school system with respect to a number of different issues. So this update will provide information to that, to that end. And so I'll just go through it briefly, and then, of course, any board members who have any questions can ask them. And then we do have a points of information, I think, coming up later for people in the public task, too. So I'm not sure how big this appears on your screens, and I'm kind of juggling some here. If I miss something for any board members here in person or online, just raise your hand and we'll grab you. Okay, so first off, school conditions for the first pandemic. Basically, we're going to restart the pandemic response periods that we used to have last year. As I was sitting through the meetings, it was clear that with a number of different situations that we're facing as a school system, including, for instance, most recently, the Delta variant, information just like last year will be changing fairly frequently. So we are restarting all of the things that we had last year with respect to monitoring, management, and input. So COVID, the COVID committees will begin again. We'll be having multiple meetings with staff throughout the weeks, each week and in the month. The board, the two board members that were on the COVID-19 committee, we can keep the same two unless you want to do something else.
I think we have three.
No, it was two right now, but, you know, we can add them. But right now, there's two, and so that's restarting again. So those meetings are going to be happening monthly. I do not expect us to have our education options modified. This year, it's going to be all in person. I don't expect to have any hybrid or anything like that. I certainly hope that's not what happens. But our response, you know, pandemic response periods that we had last year gave us that flexibility to do something different if we had to, and give everybody enough notice if we had to. So in this case, it's not going to be because we are going, say, hybrid. I don't think that's what's going to happen. But the state of Connecticut and the DPH and the CDC, they may change what we're required to do from one span of time to another. And, you know, we would then notify the, you know, the staff and the public that, starting on a certain date, maybe in the second pandemic response period or the third pandemic response period, we would be changing to do X, Y, or Z based on what the state or the federal government or the DPH or whatever is laying down at that time. So essentially, right now, what's happening for the first pandemic response education period, which is September 8 through September 30, which is the beginning of school, the Centers for Disease Control recommended in their guidance published August 5, that universal indoor masking by all students aged 2 or older and staff and teachers and visitors in K-12 schools was to occur regardless of vaccination steps. So that means that through the first month or first pandemic response period that we have, we are going to have universal masking for all staff and students. This is also illustrated in Executive Order 13A, which was signed August 5. It is in effect through September 30, and it requires that all masks be worn in schools. So that, again, is another reason why for that first pandemic period, masks will be required in the town and public schools for all visitors, students, staff, et cetera. The Connecticut Department of Public Health held a meeting on August 10, and they reiterated both Executive Order 13A and the CDC guidance, and indicated that masks were to be worn at all times by all public and non-public pre-K to 12 schools, all students, staff, visitors, et cetera. Quarantine requirements that were a part of last year will also be a part of the picture this year. Let me just make sure everybody can see that. I'm scrolling up here. Quarantine requirements were communicated both in the August 3 and August 10 meeting from the Department of Public Health. And basically, they stated that vaccinated students and staff no longer need to quarantine. So that was a change from last year. And obviously, there weren't a lot of people vaccinated at the beginning of last year at all. But none, in fact, of course. But now that they're all vaccinated, they do consider vaccinated students and staff outside of the quarantine requirement. Students seated at least three feet away or more from another student who's been identified as positive would have to quarantine if they did not show proof of vaccination or were not vaccinated. So in the case where the quarantines are in effect, we have a three-foot now radius rather than a six-foot radius. The condition, however, is that all students in the classroom must be wearing a mask in order for us to have that three-foot quarantine diameter versus six feet. If any students in the classroom are not masked, we have to use six feet. So it expands the number of kids significantly that would have to quarantine if all students in a classroom are not wearing a mask. So that, that's one of the ways that they are changing the quarantine status to say, if you are all masked, and we have universal masking and everyone's adhering to it, then in a classroom, if there is a COVID-positive child, you just do three feet around that child. Anyone that is, you know, less than three feet, who is unvaccinated, would then have to quarantine. But if anyone is unmasked, anybody in that room is unmasked or doesn't have it on during that time, then it's six feet, which is a much bigger area. More kids would be quarantined in that situation. So that's, that's how they're handling quarantines this year, and those are the requirements that they've given to the school system. In buses, cafeterias, and other contexts, staff less than six feet are subject to quarantine, staff and students. So on buses and cafeterias and things like that, it's six feet. In classrooms, it's three feet, provided everyone is masked. Quarantine for students and staff that are close contact will be 10 days out of school. And so if there is a student who has not shown vaccination status or is known to be unvaccinated, then that child, if they are within that three-foot radius or six-foot radius, if people aren't wearing masks, will then be out for 10 days if they are within that radius of a student who tests positive for COVID. The students that also have to be asymptomatic, meaning if they're not showing symptoms that, that, you know, and they're vaccinated, then they won't be quarantined. That kind of thing will be in effect, too. Students and their families do not have to report travel to the school district. In the past, there was a requirement that no longer exists. The travel guidelines are pretty restrictive. So people are encouraged to go look at the travel guidelines, and I've added a link to the travel guidelines here. When people travel, there's some recommendations here off this link. And so people are encouraged by the DPH to follow those recommendations. But people do not have to report their travel to the school system. Recession in physical education, masks are not needed for recess. They're not needed for PE classes that are outdoor. Athletics and co-curricular activities, all athletics will begin on time. Fully vaccinated students and staff do not have to quarantine from sports or other activities, provided they remain asymptomatic. So if they have a close contact, they're not going to have to quarantine if they're vaccinated. So that's the same kind of thing for sports as it is classroom, so long as they're not showing any symptoms. Arts and music instruction and performance, nothing really has changed from last year on that. We still have to distance people about six feet when they are doing what's called increased respiration, like flowing on a wind instrument or singing. They do still want six-foot separation for those things, because they are, you know, putting out a lot of, a lot of air, breathing hard, the droplets and that type of thing. So essentially, that's it. What I tried to do on this document as well is give a refresher as to what these terms mean. So just as a brief, if I can get the... Sorry, I'm blending slowly. Okay, so on the form, I do give a brief description of what these terms are again. A pandemic response education period is a period of time where certain rules, basically, are in effect, certain conditions are in effect. So there's going to be seven of those periods for this year. The begin and end dates of those periods are listed in the document. So for instance, right now, the first period will go through September 30. And, 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 you know, if the mask and the requirements do not change as of September 30, if there's no change or that executive order is extended or the Department of Public Health lays down requirements that are similar or exactly the same as what exists now, then the masking requirement will continue into the next pandemic education period. So it's, it's designed to kind of reassess it at the time that the state reassesses its guidelines and then implement it on a timeline that people can predict. And changes would occur in about, you know, monthly iterations if there are any changes. So right now, the next period would begin October 1, and the executive order goes through September 30. So these rules with respect to masking, quarantine, and et cetera are at least in effect through the September 30 period when the executive order extinguishes. Let's see. The pandemic response conditions, again, this definition is just explaining, like, what is a pandemic response condition? These would be, you know, statistics with respect to what the virus, the viral prevalence was, as well as conditions that we're supposed to follow from the federal government, the state government, and, you know, any other authority like DPH that we are required to adhere to the guidance of or adhere to the requirements that they lay down. So basically, these conditions are dictated for these periods of time. And, you know, I will communicate along the way what the results of the meetings are as we have them. So we're, you know, we're getting an idea of where things are headed. Sometimes they will not, you know, things will not be communicated until the tail end of a period. So for instance, we may not really know what's going to happen with that executive order until sometime in the last week of September. And so that communication may come out sometime during that time. If we know ahead of time, I'd let people know, and we can modify things as needed. But at least this gives people a general idea of when something might change, so that people have a sense of it. So the masks are universal and must be worn by everyone, at least through September 30 at this time. And we don't really have any indication that that's going to change at this moment in time, so. And I think that, finally, this describes a bit the COVID-19 committee that existed last year and will continue to work this year. Who it includes, and it has medical, you know, it has our nurse director, it has facilities, has transportation, has athletics, it has board members and others. And generally, we will review information and advise me essentially on the direction people think that we should be going in. Once again, you know, we really are bound by what we are handed vis a vis the executive order and from the requirements that the DPH in Connecticut would be, would be communicating for any of these given time periods. So we do a lot of talking in these committees and report out on how every, on this committee and report out on how things are going and how the staff and students are reacting. And we can make tweaks to how we do things. But what we do is often dictated by the requirements. So essentially, that's the COVID-19 update in a nutshell. It's kind of where we are. And I will post this up where the superintendent bulletin page is after the meeting tonight, maybe tomorrow morning if I can't get to it this evening.
Perfect. We will have four member questions. I definitely have a few to start off with, Dr. Willitt. The way that I'm looking at it, so you're twelve and up or right now eligible to get vaccinated, so that puts it around like seventh grade-ish, right?
Yeah, roughly.
So you're talking about half of middle school versus none. So when we have these quarantines, I mean, are we being proactive in that we need vaccination statuses so that we don't do it? Or when someone gets within that range and they're like, okay, like, how is that going to work, like?
We've asked, and we will put in the bulletin again, the request that people share their vaccination status with the nurse director. So it was in the newsletters last year, and we're going to put that back in the newsletters this year.
But so say someone doesn't, you know, didn't provide it, and they're within the three feet. Then the nurse is going to call them and say, look, you're within the quarantine, and I don't see that your vaccination is on record. So, I mean, at what stage, like, what are, what's going to be that protocol of?
If they don't provide it, we're instructed to consider them as non-vaccinated.
Okay.
So they don't have to provide it, but if they don't, we are to consider them not vaccinated. And operate accordingly.
Okay, I was just wondering, because obviously, like I said, you're talking half of a middle school, but then all the grades below aren't even eligible, so.
K five, yeah, K five, it's just, there won't be a, that question will not be relevant, K five, for instance, and a little bit of six. The people most impacted by the quarantines in this year will be the K five, the primary, and a little bit of six, but mostly K five.
Now, what happens, we're going to have, we're not going to have the remote option, so they are just going to get sent home with work for that? I mean, they're still small.
So if somebody is, you know, if it looks, if it looks like we have a student who is going to be out, you know, it would be as if they had gotten the flu or something else, you know, we'll provide support, but there's no synchronous learning option where people come in, you know, like, you know, a video like last year synchronously. Students would be in a situation where it would be as if, say, they were infected with something like a seasonal flu, where they were out for a series of days with respect to that. One thing that we have had communicated to us is that there's an expectation that in early September, Pfizer's vaccine will be FDA-approved. And if that happens, obviously, or when that happens, many people think it's when. We will aggressively provide clinics, just like we did before, and the sooner we can get everybody vaccinated, the less likely there will be that people will be helped. But the one clear message that's coming from CDC, DPH, and, you know, the officials that you report to and listen to is that they are relying very heavily on vaccinations and encouraging vaccinations very strongly, and they look at it as the way that we keep the schools open. So that's, that's the main strategy is vaccinations. It looks like Pfizer will be available sometime in September, FDA-approved for that, that looking younger age group. But it is going to be a bumpy year again in the beginning here because the quarantines, you know, are possible. We probably, and I hope, don't have a lot of them, but if the kids are all wearing the masks, the three-foot radius is going to take out far fewer kids than the six-foot one did. So if they're asymptomatic and, you know, are all wearing masks, then the three-foot will probably take out, you know, a handful of kids in such an incident. Whereas when we were doing it last year, you know, we, we saw quite a decently sized group, would, you know, be thirty or something like that. Hopefully, we won't be anywhere near that kind of situation this year, so long as everyone's adhering to that. The problem comes where, if for some reason, at that time, when this situation occurs, someone's not wearing a mask, we have to go to six feet, and that'll be more. That'll take out far more kids.
Dana has her hand up, so we'll go there, and we're going to do online and in-person, online and person. I'm going to go back and forth, so.
Bless your heart, Ashley. Um, so it's going to be hard, like, people are going to be like this, and, um, anyway, Dr. Willitt, thank you for putting together this. Christina and I were on the pandemic committee, so I definitely look forward to being a part of that process again. I guess I'm going to pigtail on, you know, what Ashley said. I think I'm just more worried about our students and their learning in quarantine. You know, there's X amount of days, if they're sick or if they're not sick, you know, there's days where, you know, you could be sick for a couple of days with COVID, you could be sick the whole time, you could be asymptomatic. Are we gonna, I mean, you said it's going to be, I mean, I just, I'm just concerned about what that looks like when they're home and remote, or obviously not remote, so they're home, right? I'm just concerned, is there any way that there is something that we can do as a town public school system to kind of better prepare our students who are quarantined versus just sending them home with packets of paper? I, I don't know. I, I don't know if that was something that was discussed or if we have any flexibility with that.
Yeah, I'm going to, we're going to have staff that will follow up with students who are in quarantine. There will be more support than, say, there would be in an average non-pandemic year. But it won't be, it won't be like the synchronous jumping into the classroom in a.
Okay. But there'll be support, kind of like you had, I mean, I don't, you probably not calling that, but you had online pair of teachers, educators that were available for, to be, to be emailed or corresponded with.
Yeah. What we called them last year was the Remote Learning Associate Educators. And individuals and some teachers will be, you know, will be working to follow up with children that are in quarantine status.
Okay.
That will be a difference. But it, again, to draw that, that distinction, it will not be that synchronous video where people log in and they're seeing the classroom in real time. That, that is not offered. So they'll be followed by educators and teachers, but there will not be that synchronous.
Okay. But they'll be able, kids, students will be able to log on to their respective Chromebooks, bring those home, and access schoolwork that way with the technology that we have?
Yeah, they'll be able to log into Google Classroom, get trails from Google Classroom. The RLAEs or similar staff will be calling, you know, following up, making contact, you know, answering questions, but, you know, but that will be more or less how that is handled this year. This, January twenty twenty-two, for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, is coming out with remote learning guidelines, but they have not done that yet. So the thing that's out there at this time is that school districts are not required to offer remote learning. And so the state of Connecticut promises guidelines in January of this year, I'm sorry, January of twenty twenty-two for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year, and there is some statements that the state of Connecticut would offer remote learning for populations that were designated as needing it, say, through Bible four IEP. But currently, we don't have any guidelines, and they are, they are, they are not going to actually put them out until after December.
Okay. I guess I feel more confident in the process without having the remote learning that we have Chromebooks for all of our students. I'm glad that we were able to get some resources and Tepdo support last school year to get those Chromebooks in every student's hand. So I hope we keep going forward with that, because I just get really concerned with kids having to be in quarantine and, and missing the opportunity to continue their education, whether it be remotely or in person. I do have a question about the music department and band. You said saying six, six feet versus, I thought I had read about twelve feet about that. And I don't know if maybe it's six feet because they're going to be using bell covers or music masks.
Yeah, they'll keep using the, the same methods they've used last year, but I think it's extended distancing is the term, and it's six feet or more. So there's a whole slew of things that we have to do for, you know, wind instruments, singing, and high exertion, you know, dance, and so that kind of thing. The dance kind of resembles athletics, but the, the wind instruments and things like that have their own guidelines. So the, the general message on that is most of that stays the same.
Okay.
Be three feet, but anything like wind instruments, that type of thing where kids are doing that in a group, that needs to be six, that would be a six-foot quarantine and should be about a six-foot separation where possible, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, Ashley. Thank you.
Let's go to Griffin.
So, just kind of reading what you just said. So really, K through five, if they don't wear masks, they're going to be thrown into quarantine much, much, much more easily. With that.
A larger, a larger group, yes. Yeah, so it goes from a three-foot radius, which is, or diameter, which is taking out only a few versus six.
What was the, if you could go back, what was the deal with the no? If the whole classroom has a mask?
So the condition, yeah, the condition for applying three feet in a classroom is based on every single person in that classroom wearing masks. So the rule is, let's say we're in this room here, and that all of you are wearing masks, but I, I'm not wearing a mask at, at a moment in time or during a period of time that one of you, you know, becomes COVID positive and reports that to the school, then whatever, whoever's within six feet is going to be quarantined.
Even if you're vaccinated?
If you're vaccinated, you, and you're wearing a mask, no.
I guess it would only be staff, because staff would only.
Staff are staff or a different thing. The kids themselves right now, the kids who are, if, if in that room, everybody's vaccinated, I mean, everyone's wearing a mask, and we do have a COVID positive, then we do the three feet. Now, if anybody in there is not wearing it, then we have to do six feet. So it just means, but again, the asterix on it is, if someone's vaccinated and we have evidence of vaccination and they're asymptomatic, and they're wearing a mask, they don't get quarantined. So if you're vaccinated, wearing a mask, or asymptomatic, no matter what the radius, you're not going to get quarantined. But if you're not vaccinated, and for whatever reason, at the moment in time of, you know, identification of positive, you are not wearing a mask, you are subject to the quarant.
So that, that's tough for me, just because that's really putting, I think this is really too bad then for K through five, because I, I think that, you know, even if parents have the opportunity at some point in the future to decide that their child doesn't want to wear a mask, it sounds like then they have the, you know, risk that they're going to be, their child might be drawn into quarantine, who knows how many times. So that's definitely just, I think, a tough kind of pill to swallow with, with all of these rules, with masks and that. But I guess really what my question is, it sounds like we are going to be just as, or you are going to be just as busy with contact tracing, if not more so, to then have to flag, okay, who's a quarantine kid, who's not? Who sat next to a quarantine kid, who didn't? So my question for you really is, what are we doing to make sure that you have additional help so that you don't, you're not doing all the contact tracing again this year? Because I, I just don't think it's in the best interest of the district to have you spend so much of your time contact tracing. And it just doesn't sound like this year is going to be all that much easier, as far as that.
Well, we, we've become pretty good at it, and we have a system for it. So, you know, we'll be efficient. But, but, you know, and I work with the nurse, the director of nursing, Paul Farham, and the nurses. Each person will carry their burden and take their role. But at the end of the day, the existence of these things requires more involvement for me, you know. It, it's just the way this is. We don't have any one that I can, you know, give a lot of other things to with respect to generation of documents, policies, and things like that. Personnel-wise, we have a chief personnel officer, which can help a lot with that personnel side of things. This kind of thing is just, it, it is disheartening in some ways to know that we're walking into a year with the same, many, many rules and things we have to follow. And in a lot of the compliance with those things falls on me, my responsibility. So I won't.
Sleep a wink.
Well, it'll be an interesting year, right? But, but, you know, the nurse and I have a good system going, the nurses do a great job. The teachers, you know, when I send out a communication for them to report back, you know, they've, they've gotten used to it, and they know what they're doing with it. So that information is collected fairly quickly. We are much better at this than we were at September of twenty twenty. But everyone would be happy if this changed sometime soon. You know, because it is a burden, and as much of it as can be offloaded, I, I have at this point. The pieces that do remain with me are largely because I'm the authority figure, you know. And I, I can, a nurse is not an authority figure with a staff member, but I, so if I say we've got to do X, Y, or Z, that has to happen. But a nurse, you know, it's a different situation. So I do have to be involved with some of these things, but the nurse is doing a great job with, with the follow-up and things like that.
All right, thank you. Let's go to Sophia.
I wanted to say that I'm really appreciative of this guidance that, Dr. Willitt, you're providing to us. It's definitely helpful for us as, as parents and as, you know, citizens, understanding where we're headed and what is being required, and even the frequency by which this is all going to be visited and guidance will be updated. My question is, I, I was at the, of the understanding that the state was going to be providing a remote learning option for this next school year. Is that still the case? Oh, did I miss? Something about it? It's possible I did. I, I just thought they were.
So your question is an excellent one. Many of us thought that, 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 that that would be the case. Turns out that, that the state will apparently provide it, but it's not going to be in September. So there'll be an option at some point developed by the state and will be reflected in the guidelines that are put out in January of twenty twenty-two. But, but there will not be a state option for remote learning, as I understand it. But there will be at some point.
Once there's.
And I think people felt like that point would, might have been now, but, but oh, that is not the case. That point will be at some point in the future. And the guidance that is put out in January of twenty twenty-two is supposed to make more of this clear. And it, their guidance, take the, it's put out in twenty twenty-two, January, and it takes effect for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three year. Which means for this year, we've got to figure out our own way of moving through it. And I think essentially where this comes down is, you know, if there are, you know, any students with IEPs, five oh fours that require, is that, you know, that would mean some kind of, you know, modification. We would be doing that the way we've done it in the past. And we have options for things, just as we've had in the past, that we would utilize under those conditions. But for general population, students, there is no remote option. And like I said before, what we'll do is, if there is a quarantine condition, you know, we'll have Remote Learning Associate Educators follow up with families, and, you know, we'll do outreach, and there'll be some connecting there with staff, but, but there won't be any kind of, you know, online schooling or synchronous schooling that existed last year. And that, that's very similar across the state, that that's more or less the case, so.
Well, I guess my follow-up question would be if these, this population that we have in our district, the five oh four plan IEP students, they require accommodations. Would remote learning be considered an accommodation?
It depends on the situation, and there, you know, if a child is hospitalized, for instance, we do oftentimes set up some accommodation for that child to receive education during the time of a hospitalization, you know, homebound kind of things to occur, and we've had methodologies for handling that in the past. We've been encouraged to use those same methodologies for handling buddy that might need some kind of assistance of that level. But we're talking, like, if a child is. But we're talking like if a child is in Hartford Hospital because of something that happened. You know, the school system works in conjunction with the hospital to help provide some continuity of learning for that child. Those kinds of things would be the methods used, just like they have been in the past. You know, we have the Edge Annuity is a program that we've used with some children. But, um, it's not to be generally just supplied because of a quarantine. It would require a parent or guardian, you know, uh, going through a process to acquire it. And so that's, that's unlikely to be, uh, used ubiquitously this year. It's highly unlikely that a lot of people will be doing, uh, a form of remote learning. The vast, vast majority will be. Doing, uh, typical education and in-person education. And that's the way I think that it's kind of designed to function this year. People are encouraged to be in person. Unless there is a exceptional reason not to be. Um, and that's also why I think the universal masking is in effect. Because there's that sense that as long as universal masking is in place. That the mitigations, they call it a multi-layered mitigations. That they, the feeling is multi-layered mitigations that then highly successful in making schools. You know, a, uh, a environmental context in which there is low transition. And that keeping those multi-layered mitigations means keeping that, you know, that. Low transfer virus, um, part of the picture. So they, you know, they figure that, uh. That'll keep in-person learning viable and, and possible. And that's why it's encouraged so strongly through its policy implementation and through, uh, the communications that are provided. So we won't have many, the option of some version of it would exist for a family that needed it through IEP of some kind. But it's, uh, unlikely that most people would be doing.
Thank you.
Who will go to Plour now?
I got a full sheet.
Sounds like we're going to be extended.
No, I'm only on ten. It's probably not a surprise to anyone that, um. I don't like all of what the state is making us do, uh, the quarantines especially. Like the K through five population. Really, those families have suffered, have sacrificed so much during all of this. With the quarantines and childcare and the changes in schedules and work, and it's just like, it's getting ridiculous. So people can go on a trip to, you know, Mexico. And take a rapid test, but still like a kid that's not even sick is going to stay home for 10 days and not. And, and not get an education? Like that's ridiculous. I know it's not your fault. My hair's on fire again. So maybe the advocacy letter should include something about quarantines because it's ridiculous. Um, a couple of questions. Alright, calm down. Um.
Take a deep breath.
Take a deep breath. Uh, you already answered about contact tracing. Anyone that doesn't share their back status, if they're contact traced. And they actually did have their vaccine and share that with you. Will they be able to, to go back to?
I would, then we could rule them out if they were asymptomatic and wearing a mask.
Okay, um, as far as the prep periods go. Uh, as long as those don't involve scheduling changes, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
Because that, that's what caused the turmoil for K and even the high school. Is all the scheduling changes.
We don't plan on having any of that.
We need consistency.
Unless the state requires that we do something.
Alright, I won't say this. Natural immunity, anyone that's had COVID, um, are, are they going to be considered vaccinated in a sense? That's insane. So a kid that's had COVID can go to school. Let's say it's a fifth grader, they can go to school, have a close contact, be quarantined and then be forced into vaccination later? Like this is ridiculous.
They still have to wear a mask, and I think there'll probably be an extension of the 90 day kind of thing where if you had COVID within 90 days, you're considered. You're considered sort of, I don't know what the term would be. You will not be subject to quarantine if you were sick within 90 days. I think that's going to be continued.
Is it because?
But if you were sick last year, it's, uh, it's apparently the effect of your, if your, um, protected status under that condition. Exists for only a period of about three months. So you can't, if someone was sick with COVID last school year, for instance, it will not, uh, so he will not get a student out of quarantine this year. But it may be that the 90 day COVID illness period exists again. Uh, for people that do get sick with COVID and are not vaccinated, if they were sick within the last 90 days, they might not have to quarantine. But that's not going to pull over for long.
And so why can someone get a rapid test and prove that they can go back to work or whatever? But the kids have to quarantine, because when, what happened when my son was quarantined, I still had to work. I got him a rapid test, he was negative. They also did the PCR, the three, the three day. So I had two tests and then he went to daycare. So if he can go to daycare.
Technically, um. There is no way technically to return to school. Even with a negative test before eight days. And the rules around even the eight days require, you know, uh, testing to be, you know, the, the information has to be back. Negative with, with, on that eighth day. So a lot of times it ends up being 10 days. But, but at the very least, it should never have been earlier than eight days.
So.
So I don't know what, what was happening there, but with respect to the rules that I'm aware of. If you, uh, are in a close contact situation or, or, you know, there's a. Opportunity to test and you test between the fifth and seventh day. And it comes back, if you're lucky enough that it comes back on the eighth day and you tested between the fifth and seventh day and it's negative. You can return on that eighth day under those conditions, but those conditions where you can get a test back so rapidly. You know, from the fifth or sixth, whatever day, uh, you know, are, are usually not. Most kids end up being out for the 10 days. So the Tolan Public Schools does the 10 days.
So the, so is that a, an executive order requirement, 10 days?
It's the D, right now, it's what we got from DPH. Yeah.
I'm writing another.
Actually, they recommend 14 days. They recommend, uh, CUC, and I think DPH recommends 14 days. We do 10 days. And there are some like exceptions for eight days, but they generally don't. They cause frustration because people say, no, results, I just got a test in the seventh day, it's going to take two or three days to get the results. Or sixth day, and they don't get back until the 10th anyway.
I want to be honest. I mean, Andrew goes to camp and he, they swab, like, well, he swabs out himself and it's 15 minutes. Whether or not he can stay or go.
Yeah.
Well, rules are different for schools for some reason. Um, remote learning, not required or not allowed?
Not required.
So we're allowed to do it. If we're going to quarantine these kids for 10 days, I'm not going to have 10 wasted Wednesdays.
Yeah, I mean, so it, and again, um, the state of Connecticut has not clearly necessarily yet defined remote learning either. So, um, you know, at this point, January 2022 is supposed to be when they're going to put out their guidance about remote learning. So the district, you know, as an education system, uh, is not going to just say, talk, talk, you know, cookies. We're going to have the remote learning people reach out, make the connection, follow up. Help the children who are quarantined, but, um. But the synchronous learning is not something that most places are doing or are able to continue. So, um, that's, you know, we'll have to see how this progresses. And decide at that point, you know, when we get into September, if we start. If, if the conditions get very bad and there are many, many, many kids. That are in a situation where they are not in school in person, we might have to modify what we do. But, you know, the thought here is that in September, Pfizer will become available. And there won't be as many quarantines. That's the thought. And if people are wearing masks, that three foot diameter is a much smaller group of people. So, you know, last year where we saw groups of 20, 30, 50, 70, theoretically, if we're doing a three foot diameter. And many of the kids are vaccinated and even more become vaccinated, say in September. That we would not have a lot of kids that would be in a quarantine situation is the thought. So if you're going to, we, you know, we don't want to allocate lots of resources to a complete remote schooling model. If there's not going to be a lot of kids in that condition. That would cut down, that would create other issues like larger classes, things like that.
Okay.
Because we'd have to reassign staff to those roles.
I want to come back, not at this meeting. I want to come back to the quarantines and the synchronous versus asynchronous learning. But thank you, Dr. Will, I, I know this is not you. I know it's not you.
We will support kids who are quarantined, you know, we'll have educators reaching out to them, things like that. But if I, if I was going to create separate classes at this time, we'll pull teachers out of. Their current assignments to do that. We'd have to reallocate people.
Could you do like a one-room schoolhouse, like synchronous learning?
You've been disturbed too much.
I mean, you can do.
I'm bringing back the one-room school.
Yeah, I mean, one building maybe, but I think, I, again, I think at this point, we want to see what happens here in September and October. Like if, if we don't have very many people who are in that status, then, you know, that may not be the. You might compromise a much larger group of kids' quality of education for a couple of situations where there's quarantines. And I think if, if the conditions in September, October and November. Lead us into a much, much lower quarantine situation than the past did. Then we want to probably keep the resources with where they are and use the remote learning educators the way we're going to use them. There'll be outreach, there'll be connection, um, you know, but, uh, the reason. And the remote learning has been a very difficult thing for districts to manage because. The state of Connecticut did some serious flip-flopping on that. And there was a period of time where it was not even allowed in the summer, and then they shifted to, well, you know, you, you don't have to, but you can. And so most places are going to start like we are until we know what our situation is.
Thank you. Thank you for all the time.
Okay, Madhu, you are up next.
Okay, so a lot of my questions have been asked and answered, but I, I guess I just had a clarifying question about quarantines. So for unvaccinated students, if they are, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly. If they are three feet. Oh, hold on, you, you scrolled past it.
I'm sorry.
Okay. Stop. Go up a little, okay, stop. So if they're, if they come into close contact. And everyone in the class is wearing masks and they are asymptomatic. They do not have to quarantine, correct? For as long as they remain asymptomatic. Is that right?
Mr. Redditch and Tyler, are you asking about vaccinated kids? I'm sorry, that part I didn't hear.
Yes, yes, that's, uh, no, unvaccinated kids.
Child is vaccinated. And, you know, they're not symptomatic, um, they are not subject to quarantine.
So right, so what, what about un, un, unvaccinated kids? If they, so if they are within three feet. To a, to a close, or if they're in close contact. And they are asymptomatic and all students were wearing masks, they do not need to quarantine. Is that correct?
They're within three feet and they're unvaccinated, then they do have to quarantine if they're within three feet.
Okay.
Three feet or more outside of the, say, diameter of that, that person who's positive. Then, then, um, they don't.
Okay.
Benefit is that. You know, if everyone in that room is masking, then a child who's 3.1 feet away. Not symptomatic will not have to be quarantined. Versus if there are people without masks, that extends out to six feet. And, and then so that child at 3.1, 2, 3, 4, you know, four feet, five feet, those kids are, those kids are then quarantined too. So it really has to do with the benefit. That is given to, say, the district for all students masking is that kids that if there is a positive. Fewer children that are unvaccinated would have to be quarantined. If all students are wearing masks. Does that make sense?
Yeah, okay, yeah, that makes sense. So basically if it's, if, if, if masks are optional. It's got to be six feet, which result in probably more quarantines. Is that, is that right?
Yeah, and right now masks are not optional, but let's say for some reason during that period. Walter Willett, young student Walter Willett takes off his mask and. For that period, for whatever reason, is not wearing it, then, then I cannot apply three feet, I have to apply six feet. So if anybody in that classroom is not masked and refuses to do it, then. The whole class is subject to a six, six foot radius around the child who's positive or the teacher. And, uh, and again, these apply to only unvaccinated and a, and, um, and.
So the moral of the story is if we use layerist mitigation strategy, the likelihood of quarantines decreases dramatically. Does that, that sound right?
Yes, the far fewer P kids would be quarantined, yes.
Okay, okay, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madhu.
Yeah, so quick, um, so sorry if I missed this one, I had to use the restroom, but. With the remote learning discussion, you know, it's changed several times. Is there, wonder the odds that anything in this document, anything that is not just masking, but any of the things we talked about will change. From the state between now and the beginning of the school year.
Gosh, you know, those are really good questions, really hard ones. Sometimes I've thought, I, uh, sometimes I thought I knew what they were going to do or what was going to happen and I, and I was wrong. You know, so I, I have a hard time, you know, projecting with, with 100% accuracy here, but. I would suggest that likely nothing will change between now and September 30th. For the first pandemic response, you know, education period, the first period that we are back in school. Through the 30th, not, none of this will change. The way it seems to be trending right now is to be more conservative with respect to this, not more, uh, permissive. So, you know, if Delta has a, has its trajectory and then comes down and it's looking like things are much better at the end of September. Then I think, you know, there may be some changes for October, but, um. But, uh, you know, it does not look like there'll be any changes for that first period, 30 through September 30th. You know, and again, uh, you know, we're not going to leave any child who is quarantined hanging out there. We're going to assign. A staff, you know, there will be people to reach out to them. It's just, and they'll support them, but there's, um. There isn't that, um, logging in and seeing the whole class piece. And I just want to make, I know I've repeated that a couple of times, but, um, sometimes people, you know, uh, they just log in and out at different times. And I hear that, um, so people just have to, that's not available this year, you know, that synchronous option is not available.
Alright, and my second question, um, just clarifying about the RLAEs that we hired, one for each school. I know there's going to be a couple that helped with, uh, the after-school academy for high school and middle school. We're keeping all of them on, keeping all of their contracts in place.
Well, you know, the RLAEs that we brought in were when, uh, we originally applied that when most kids were not vaccinated. And there was a lot more. You know, we're, we're going to have people start the year in those roles as well as certified teachers in roles of support. But, um, that, that's not going to be at the same level that we had last year, because we don't have the same level of need that we had last year. But, you know, we will, we will do what's necessary to respond to the level of need. So for some reason, Delta and Lambda caused massive number of quarantines. We would have to reallocate resources to provide additional, um, staff to that, to that. But, you know, we, uh, we're going to start the year with the, with the number of people assigned to this. That makes sense for the number of people that would need it. Not more, not less, you know, we're, we're prepared. Hopefully, we will never be in a place again where we have, um. Quarantining on the level that we saw during the middle of last year, or say during the middle of the pandemic. Right now, we, um, with the modified quarantine guidance and the vaccinations. Uh, I expect quarantine levels to be lower. It's just sad that the ones that are going to be affected by quarantine most often are going to be those K five kids. And those K five kids are. And those K-5 kids are, you know, they're tough, they're, it's tough for families when that happens. Whether they're with synchronous or not, when a parent has to then have a child be home, that creates childcare challenges. Um, so that's, I think that's why DPH and those authorities are really um encouraging, you know, vaccinations. And they are really, they're really pushing superintendents when that becomes possible to do everything that we can to make sure that um there are clinics in our schools. So just like, uh, I did, you know, a lot of cooperative work to have the clinics be in our schools for the other age groups. I will be, you know, doing a lot of outreach and connecting to make sure we're getting clinics in the schools for that population to, uh, or at least nearby if we can. So, um, you know, I think again, they really keep reiterating the importance of vaccination. And that that would be the game changer in their minds.
And when you say, and again, this is not certain, they might not approve it, but for how young, do you have any, is there like any word on the street as to what that means when they say they're going to approve it for?
I, I don't know the answer to that. I know that, that, that it's just been stated under 11, you know, the, the primary grades, but um, I don't know how young is to you.
Yeah.
I don't know what they're going to do there. Uh, it seems like it will be very much applied like some of these other required um immunization shots or, you know, things are. So I would imagine that it'll be most of the primary kids that are eligible, but I'm not sure if it would be down to pre-K or something like that. I don't know. They haven't done a lot of communicating to that end. It's just been more that the younger age groups will be able to get it likely in September, that FDA would likely approve it in September. And to get ourselves ready, um, and I have done outreach already to um to certain organizations to put us kind of in the queue, should we have that opportunity to have a, you know, have something happen here. Um, it depends on what they do for their data analysis too. If they think they can do a certain location and it'll grab a lot more people in a certain location, then they'll give it to that location versus us. But I'll be trying. We've become very good at setting up. We're a very good partner. For all you companies that do immunizations out there, we're a very good partner. And you know that, we've been very good, but um, but I, I anticipate that September will be a busy month. September and October are going to be a busy month.
Dust off that crystal ball.
Does anybody else want to go? I just, I just wanted to say that the vaccines are technically not FDA-approved for anyone. They're under emergency use, and I think we're still going to have a hard time getting K through five to use their kids as guinea pigs. Uh, I think they're more likely to want to go to their pediatrician as opposed to the school thing. Um, that's all I have to say on that.
I mean, my guess is, my experience, as limited as it is, I do admit quite a bit of ignorance here, but my experience in the past has been that the pediatricians don't, won't do it. Because there's too many, there's too many that are looking for it, so they actually rely on the larger clinics.
Our sort of fabulous drive-through week long, so I'm very comfortable going to my pediatrician, I'm just going to say.
Our's, they have it, Andrew was ready to get it.
Yeah, I mean, it's good if they do, but I've seen many not because of the logistics of that type of thing.
Yeah.
Unless they partner with a big, they could partner, and if they partner.
Our's in the back parking lot of the office, so I don't need to partner. It was the same nurses that we usually stay. Here you go.
I mean, you know, like, UConn Health has become excellent at mass vaccination. I mean, I'm sure they were good before, but they deploy quickly, they do large groups, and then they pack up and move to the next.
They've been at a lot of schools.
So I, I think they're going to play, they're going to be a big player in the, in the next wave of this.
But I understand what Christina was saying. I think when you're, when you're, might be giving this to your six-year-old, I think you might be more happy to go to your pediatrician in some way, shape, or form, however the pediatrician is doing it, I don't know.
No, it's, it's a lot to take in. I mean, it's unprecedented times and, you know, obviously no one does have the crystal ball to know what's happening. And then you get directions from the state and the state doesn't always fulfill their end of the bargain. So it's, it's, it's tough. So I do appreciate all the work that you're going through and all the meetings that you attend to get the information and put it out there for us. Um, you know, obviously, our next meeting will have some more information. Um, I don't think the state is changing anything for that September 30th plan.
Now you said that.
Who knows?
Or it'll be worse, not better.
Yeah.
We'll provide more information in the next couple of weeks about what people can expect under.
Perfect.
As we get everybody assigned and things like that.
Perfect. Well, that's good news. So let's uh move on to the ERF update.
Right, this'll take just a little bit here. This is where we could use some elevator music while I.
Ask the owl.
Sharing this, back to the agenda here, and so people should see the agenda back on the screen. And it'll take me a minute to scroll down to where we are.
Well, you don't need to go to the agenda, just want to talk to the update, ERF.
Okay, um, so basically, the Education Reserve Fund agreement has to be has to be looked at every three years by the town council and the board of ed. So the, um, the town council looked at the Education Reserve Agreement, reviewed it um at last night's meeting. The Board of Education is getting the opportunity to review it at this meeting and Ms. Greppin, in charge of financing facilities, is also um seen through FFC and we've talked about the ERF. So last night, we requested, uh, you know, we didn't make any requests for any changes to the ERF, the town was fit with that. Um, and if you are okay with it, this can constitute your review of it. Um, the council has reviewed it and, um, and it can then continue for another three years. Um, and we would review it again in 2024.
So it's just technically a review, there's no board action that needs to take place?
No, just that.
Didn't change anything, so it's really essentially what we have.
Not unless you wanted to change it, right. So the process is outlined within the sections, you know, of the chapter of the ordinance, specify that the town council and the board of education review it at least every three, three years as needed or required. Uh, but if there are no changes, you don't really need to do anything.
Okay, any board member questions on this? Reviewing what we have. No questions, no changes. Okay, we're good to go. So move to H6, the advocacy letter.
So, uh, H6 is the advocacy letter, draft letter to the DPH from state of Connecticut by the Board of Education, updated to the state in recent weeks. Um, this is the document that for, for all intents and purposes, was first looked at um on July 14th, and it's put in front of the board again for your, your decision or your review of it once.
Go ahead, Ford. I figure I'd take over. Um, we reviewed this in communications twice. I think after having more information from the COVID update, um, I would probably change the first line, um. No, sorry. Or even the town board of education, uh, because I, I don't think everyone on, on is willing to sign. Um, so I don't think it would be coming from the board as a whole. I think it would be coming from individual members. Uh, and I think, um, the only way I'd be willing to sign it is, say, as a member of the town board of education, I respectfully request that the state of Connecticut stop implementing, stop implement quarantining of asymptomatic close contacts and make mask-wearing optional for all students and school staff for the 2021, 2022 school year, provided, and then keep it as is. Um, because I can't, I can't vote, and I know it's not my vote, but I can't really advocate to take the masks off if we're going to continue these ridiculous quarantines, honestly. So I would want to advocate for both in the letter and.
I agree.
Um, if, you know, we can leave it at that, you know, we'll type it up and I'm definitely going to sign it. I'm going to leave it at the board office, you know, anyone else that's comfortable signing it, uh, please do.
Yeah, um, any, Jacob?
Yeah, no, I think that's a good idea. Uh, I think it makes complete sense. Um, and again, I, I said this at the last meeting, but I'll just reiterate my point or two points. Uh, number one, this is an advocacy letter, this is not what we are going to do. Um, the DPH guidelines are what we're going to do. Second, uh, the reason why I feel comfortable supporting it is just the risk differential between the most vulnerable and students, which is outlined in the last paragraph. Uh, that's what I keep going back to. That's um the cheap bit of logic behind why I would feel comfortable signing a letter like this. As Christine's points, I guess, I think it makes sense.
Perfect. Um, so I was not at the July 14th meeting, but I did review the minutes and everything, and I do also agree with the letter and I do agree with you, Christina, as far as adding that sentence because I was even a little surprised at the quarantine rules that were still going to be in effect. So I do think that's important and to your credit, Jacob, I completely agree with you. I mean, to me, we are not going to go against the DPH, if, if that's the rule or the governor's executive order, if it goes beyond September 30th. And I, I think there was maybe a little confusion out there with a lot of the emails that we got that thought we were voting on masks for Talon public schools. And I, you know, I don't think we, any of us even combined have that kind of power to make that decision. So, but to me, the most important sentence in here is provided that the COVID cases remain at low levels and the virus does not mutate in such a way that it poses a serious risk to unvaccinated children. So I do support, um, parents being able to make that decision for their child as long as the DPH and the CDC are not saying that, you know, this is going to be um absolutely horrific to children. But I do think that when hopefully things come down the way they were maybe two months ago, I do think that parents should get the opportunity to make those decisions, but I do support this letter as an advocacy letter and you know, so thank you to all of you who worked, I know, very hard on this letter the last couple of months. So I would though also like to say, I'd really like to see you go soon. So, so let me know when it's at the board office, please. Thank you.
Okay, uh, let's go to Madhu.
So I, I, I do have a few issues with this, um, you know. First, the letter is kind of ignoring the existence of the Delta variant, which, you know, is actually, you know, it is harmful to children and children are being put in intensive care at a very high rate. Um, so I mean, you know, I, I have to ask, like, what the utility of this letter is. You know, if the utility is, you know, we're, we're trying to satisfy a group of, of, of residents, you know, and we're going to do so at, to the detriment of, you know, the possible detriment of public health um against the advice of council and with the potential loss of grants. You know, I, I, I don't know why we would be doing this. We, we would not be acting in the best interest of the community. If the goal of the letter is to affect, you know, officials' decision um on their recommendation, um, uh, you know, I, we need to be able to argue factual basis, and I, I don't see factual basis in here. Um, I would have said 30 to 60 days ago when cases were trending in the right direction and everything was plummeting, like, it would have been appropriate to send something like this, maybe. Um, but again, it's also out, outside of our purview, as other people have mentioned. Um, from an institutional standpoint, I think we need to leave the board out of it. I don't think, I don't think it's a good idea for it to come from the board, especially when we're going to be advocating with another state department or department of the state um for an S-BAC letter to remove those. So I, I, I don't think this is a good idea.
Thank you, Madhu. Um, I do know that, what Florida had said, that this is not going to be coming from the full board, that it's going to be individual members.
Gotcha, I, I missed that part, sorry.
Oh, um, that's why, who would like to sign it can, but it's not a full board item.
Okay.
Any other members?
I, 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 I do want to say, like, it, it shouldn't mention the board at all. Like, you know, the, the entity of the board needs to be left out of it. That, that's all I would request. You'd be like, you know, you want to sign it individually, you know, that, hey, that's, that's your right to do so. But I don't think they should mention the Board of Education at all. That, that's.
Uh, Dana?
Um, thank you. Uh, honestly, I, I'm, again, anybody can advocate for what they feel passionately about. So I'm, I'm very appreciative that everyone's passionate on this subject as well as other topics that we've discussed. I think if we do do this advocacy letter, if somebody does do it, that we don't have it submitted by Dr. Willett uh on behalf of the board or by Dr. Willett on behalf of X individuals. Um, I think it should be individuals on their own as, as a resident of Talon or as a, uh, resident of the state of Connecticut. Um, honestly, it's our job as Board of Ed members to uphold and represent the 15,000 residents in town and as the 2,200 students in town. And to advocate for one group versus another, I think is going against at least the oath that I took when I came into office is to make sure that I advocate and represent um all the students and staff in Talon. Um, so, uh, I think we need to be objective about this and take the emotion out of, out of it and make sure we're looking at it objectively. I think a lot of the statements in this letter are saying we want masks removed or um flexible, what does it say? Make mask-wearing optional for all students and staff. I think everybody wants to get to not wearing masks. Um, and it says, you know, provided that COVID cases remain low and the virus does not mutate and it's not sick and it's with the guidance of the DPH. Well, I think folks who are saying wear masks are also saying use the guidance of the DPH. So in theory, we're saying the same thing in two different ways. Um, we're, we're going with the guidance of the DPH and what's safest for our children and our families and our entire community. Um, I do feel that, you know, we need to follow the science and listen to the health, health experts. Um, and, and do just that. Um, I'm not in the medical field. Um, I'm not the medical expert. I would not be charged in making anybody's medical um status or any decisions in their medical situation. This is also not under the purview of the board. Um, we don't have any say in it, um, other than your personal advocacy letter or letter to somebody. Uh, I think someone, I don't know who said it, but uh, they said, you know, I did a lot of the emails. I was under the impression that people thought that we actually had the power to make that choice for our school system, and sadly, we don't. Um, and I don't want to mislead or um mislead anybody, anybody in town. We want to do the right thing for all of our students, but this isn't something that we could, writing a letter or it's not something we can institute into a policy, it's just not something that's under our umbrella. Um, it's under the, the state, the CDC, and Eastern Highland. Um, we shouldn't be spending our time really in top, talking about this. Um, in our board meetings, we talk about efficiency with contact tracing, we talk about efficiency with Wednesdays. We talk about efficiency with our educators, and we've spent a lot of time in committee and we've spent a lot of time in meetings reviewing this draft letter that really is a personal stance um of, of some of our board members and some of our folks in town, which I'm glad people are getting so committed and being so involved. But this shouldn't be a part of our, our um conversations with our board meetings because now we're, we're utilizing our superintendent's time ineffectively. Um, we could be talking about how to get more CARES funding, how to get some more ESTA funding, more ERF funding, uh, more Chromebooks for our students. Those are things, the SB, the S-BAC situation, writing that letter, that is, that's time well spent. That's time that we can actually impact and affect and make change for our Talon residents and our Talon students. So, um, I, I just, this, it's been a very polarizing topic. Um, I see both sides of the fence. So I, I just, this, it's been a very polarizing topic. I see both sides of the fence on it. You know, I, my heart breaks for all students and all families who are having to go through this complex situation. And I hope that we can continue to move forward and do it together as a community and support each other as a community. But I, I, I don't support this letter. I do support my teammates in doing what they feel is right for themselves and for their families. But I definitely think that we shouldn't have it say anything that has anything to do with the Board of Ed of talent or our superintendent. So having it at the board office, I think it needs to come from individuals alone. And I, and I implore folks in the community, I thank them for reaching out. I implore folks in the community, you reach out to the state. You, your statements and your say will have way more pull than any, any one group of us at the board. Again, it's not under our purview. So thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you, Dana. You guys both had time, so I want to give to Sophia.
I just wanted to briefly say that I agree with everybody personally. Well, this isn't how, about how I feel personally on the issue. This is about us as the Board of Education. And my concern with the letter is that it might be, I think it is confusing. The correspondence we received a lot on masks from both sides. But one similar theme was that every, the authors of the correspondence, many of them felt that this was a board decision to make. And they were imploring us to make a decision. And I don't want our constituents to be confused about our role and what we're doing for them as their representatives. This is not a decision for us to make and I'm grateful the DPH has provided the guidelines. It's really, I, I find it at least settling that we know what we're doing for a little bit. And that's just my only concern. I just don't want the citizens of Talon to get confused or think that we're making this decision and this letter is, you know, a way to make that decision.
And you, Sophia, Jacob, you guys can go first.
Yes, I'm starting to forget what I have to say.
I can come back to you.
Yes.
Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, everyone, for chiming in. I respectfully disagree that this was a waste of time. I think it's within our purview to advocate as a Board of Ed if we're not going to advocate, no matter what it is. You know, what are we here for? Just policy that the state takes to us? You know, I'm grateful for the guidance, but I don't necessarily agree that the quarantines need to continue and that's guidance. So why, you know, you could say it's personal. Are you saying we don't, you know, have the intellect to advocate for these things? But, I mean, I have a molecular biology degree. I'm a registered nurse. Right? This, a lot of this, you know, even in my daycare, the kids have to wear masks to and over, but then they can all sit together and eat. Does that make sense? What kind of guidance is that? Um, I disagree. Sorry, I get fired up. I do think that, you know, we've already sent our personal letters, you know, from personal email addresses if we felt the need to. I do think that even though it's not coming from the board as a whole, advocating as a Board of Education member is in our purview. So I think it should come from the board office. With the names, because the last time I wrote a letter and I didn't go through the board, I got a whole lot. I got a whole lot of hate, so.
But that, that's one thing that when I talked to Jessica about it, you know, you could send it as a virtual members, but it should not come from the superintendent's office.
Are we mailing this physically or emailing it?
Well, could you give us the emails, Dr. Willett, and then?
I mean, I have no problem.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I can give you emails or you can, you can mail a letter to DPH or I could give you specifically what you want, but it's up to you. But I think you are, what, whatever you're ultimately going to have here as a final product, which sounds like it would be at the board office, for those board members who want to sign it, I can, you know, then move it to the people that you want it to go to.
But should it come from, I think, from one of our email addresses and not yours?
Yeah, so, yes.
Well, there's no, there's no board attorney review on here.
If you're emailing it, yeah, probably.
Do you want to take the? Yes, we'll do it from Lord's email address, then whoever wants to sign it. Easy peasy.
Madhu? Oh, you are muted. I see you.
Sorry, I just realized that. So I, I mean, I do want to point out that Policy 9010 states the Board of Education represents the residents in town in carrying out the mandates of the general statutes pertaining to education. I do not see how this is not a matter of public health. I, I don't see how this is within the purview of the Board of Education. I really don't. Yes, it's about stuff going on in schools, but it's a matter of public health. This isn't something that, like, you know, the S back letter that we're writing, that pertains to education. This does not. Yeah, I, 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 I really think that the board needs to be left out of it, like in terms of like, I mean, I don't think the board should be mentioned at all in it. That's all I'm saying.
But if it's something that affects our entire district.
But it's a matter of public health. It's not, it's not that it's, it's not, this isn't an education decision. Like, you know, the S, like, like I said, the S back thing, that is a, an educational decision. This is a matter of public health. This is something that's being decided by the Department of Public Health and the Eastern Highland Health District. Nothing, I'm sorry. Right, but we're opining on, we're, we're advocating for something that has to do with public health.
Let me just stop.
That's the difference here.
But what is going to happen is that this letter can be signed by individuals and not by the full board and it's not going to come.
Right, but I'm, what my fear is, is that it's going to be misconstrued as it's coming from members of the Board of Education and that, you know, the majority of the Board of Education feels this way. And that's where I think it's, you know, kind of a tricky area. I would at least like Jessica to review this to make sure. And she, if she says it's okay to send out, I, you know, that is what it is.
Who, I'm telling you what Jessica said.
Okay, sorry.
As an individual. A board and it does not come from Dr. Willett. Those were the requirements.
Okay, sorry. What I'm talking, I, I can't hear you talking over me, so I apologize for that. But, okay.
Jacob?
Yeah, Christine and Christina kind of said my point that I forgot, which is that if it affects education, and I think it does, because we wouldn't have had the H4 on here if it, you know, had absolutely no pertaining toward its education, I feel like it falls under our purview to at least have an opinion on it or have board members have an opinion on it. So I, I don't have a problem with sending it individually. And I do remember having the discussion with Jessica, or at least through you, that we can certainly advocate and not risk any sort of liability issues or losing funding or anything like that, which I definitely do not want to do.
Yeah, as, as the individuals and not the board. And that's kind of why you can't be involved. So, you know, I do, I do check our bases and I do make sure that things are done efficiently and, you know, done properly, because the last thing I want to do is get anyone in trouble and have any kind of additional issues for Dr. Willett to deal with, because I think he's got enough on his plate to deal with. So we're going to leave it as anyone who would like to sign said letter can reach out to Ms. Lord and go from there. Okay. So let's move on to committee and liaison reports. Dana, do you want to go first with Birch Grove? Because I know there's a bunch.
Uh, yes, thank you, Ashley. Um, there is a bunch, but the highlights, let me get to my notes. The highlights are we are on time, we are under budget. We did approve the swing set last night in our special meeting. So, and that is going to be inside, within the budget. So we are going to get 89% reimbursement on the swing set and all the preparation for that. And it looks as if we'll be able to move in date for 8/23. So, you know, I did see some pictures of some of the classrooms with boxes of mystery items inside. And it's becoming very real. It's all of the, the miniscule little items. They just finished furnishing, excuse me, bringing the furniture and fixtures in for the media center. Mr. Savva, Pete Savva is doing a phenomenal job with his team, getting all the equipment over and moving things over out of the portables. I know that's a fast and furious situation. But the highlights are on time, under budget, move in 8/23. So it's looking really good. And then we have the grand opening coming up as well for all families in Talon to come to. So that'll be a fantastic event.
Now, are they including tours on the grand opening?
Um, I think it's just an event because I don't, I'd have to find out for you, Ashley, but I can let you know. I have another meeting next week, so I can ask that. I know tours were iffy because of what was going on, but I'm not sure. Maybe Dr. Willett can answer that.
Yeah, I think what areas they are going to be able to show. But I don't, that's.
That almost sounds like we're sending our kids to an unfinished school.
No, no, the school is going to be done. I just don't know, like, if they're going to have tours open for people to come in. I can't speak intelligently about the people hosting the event, so I can find out.
Even the buildings that we do have open, say, in the past, non pandemic, we always blocked off certain areas and people didn't get lost or hidden or trapped or things like that.
I'm sure there'll be.
But it's probably not the entire run amok of the place, you know.
Because it would be. After we saw it, you know, during.
People will be able to get in there.
That'd be cool. Okay. Uh, let's see, we, because since the summer's off here, there's no FFC. Oh, mental health. You guys have mental health, right? You and?
Yeah.
We, we did. Um, I missed half of it because we were in executive session. So I, so I don't, I kind of know what happened. You know, we, we did meet, you know, it was, we, unfortunately, we didn't have enough to constitute a quorum. So we, I know, I think we're getting closer to our recommendations. I know the next meeting, one of the topics that's going to come up is how do we get input from the public? So if you're a member of the public and you were on this call and you would like to make your voice heard about mental health and substance abuse in Talon, please contact us. We'd be happy to have your input and we seek your input.
Anything else to add?
I had to do the minutes, so I watched the whole recording. Yeah, it looked like it was a good meeting. It's less applicable for us because it's mostly ideas for adults, but still very productive. And I think we do have a member of the task force that was there in the public. I'll just say, I really like that format. I think it worked quite well. So brainstorming.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, this time am I forgetting any?
Curriculum, curriculum met twice.
You want to do the first half?
Sure, I'll do the first half, sure. Um, so basically, we had a summer school pandemic update. We had 300 kids enrolled. It's been, it's been successful so far. I believe this was the last week for it. Let's see here, we're hoping to have some, you know, baseline feedback, you know, shortly. We discussed the, we also discussed possible ways that the guidance could go, which we discussed ad nauseam today. Let's see here. We're going to have a math curriculum presentation for the full board on 8/25. At least that's the plan as of right now. S back letter is still in process. Science, we're hoping for late September or early October. Let's see here, we talked about world languages, coming back to being relegated back to higher grades for a variety of reasons. And that was pretty much it.
When you said the world languages, I was like, yes, I did read those minutes.
Yes, ma'am.
So we had our second meeting, our August meeting last week. A lot of basically the same things, just a couple of things. We're thinking of doing a more in-depth discussion on personal finance. To have some proper time to review that and get like a good executive summary of what would be required if we wanted to make that a required class and all the effects of that. Additionally, I believe Dr. Willett mentioned the world languages and he's been able to move a few things around and make TIS have Spanish as a rotation. Am I?
Yeah, I think Principal Denise and that team worked really well to set up a structure so that we will have Spanish be available as a special rotation. They've done a great job with that and I think it will be great to have, you know, world language on that special rotation at TIS. The kids will love it.
I'm very excited about that because I think that's all I do is world. Right up my alley. Perfect. Okay, thank you. Anything else at this time? I think we're good, right? Um, FFC, no, no.
I'm sorry. I'm feverish. She raised her hand. I just emailed Katie about the tour and she said that people, like Dr. Willett said, that you can have access via like Main Street, but they're not going to let people kind of go throughout the building just as a quick janitorial standpoint. So there will be limited access to parts of the building.
Very cool. What else to sign up? Madhu?
Sorry, policy also met, yeah. But we, we talked about the two policy things, so that's what we did. I figured, you know, people would want to know that we met.
I know, it's like summertime and I was like, I read certain minutes and then like when you started talking, I'm like, yes, I did read those. That's right. Mine's on the vacation still. Okay, so no chairperson report, there is no board action. So let's move down to public participation again. At this time, we will, another two minutes. Dr. Willett, if you could put that wonderful little clock on, if you could please state your name and your address. Oh, yeah, no, I'm still talking. Figure out, let's, this clock here. At this time, you can raise your hand because we do not have any public here. And I will call on you and you will have two minutes and it must pertain to the agenda, but I think we have a pretty packed agenda, so that could be a lot of things. Okay, let's go ahead and let's go to Julie.
Oh, hi, Julie Brennan, 127 Ellington Road. A petition to make masks optional for our kids and parents' choice was started. This petition is to Ned Levan in the Department of Public Health, Dr. Willett and the entire Board of Education. The petition reads, "We as local residents here in Talon, Connecticut, are opposed to a mandate being implemented on our children to wear mandatory masks slash face coverings for the upcoming school year. Moving forward, we believe the choice should be optional regardless of vaccination status, age, et cetera. There's enough science, enough evidence and enough facts at this time to unmask our kids and make it optional. Thank you." We currently have a total of 163 signatures and growing. And this petition will be sent to all of the parties listed above within, within the next few days. So I just wanted to let you, you all know that as well. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Is there anyone else in the public that would like two minutes? Please raise your. Catherine McDonald.
Thank you. Can you reset that two minutes real quick? Thanks. Again, I'm at 47 Schnips at Lake Road. I appreciate the thoughtful discussion of the board on that letter, which does feel quite contradictory to the science that we're seeing. The AAP reports that 15% of new cases are in children right now, so the rates are increasing. And if even only a small percent of the Delta variant infections result in hospitalization, simple math is going to tell us that more children are going to become sick. If we're not masking everyone in school, more children are going to quarantine and there's going to be a ton of lost school time with quarantines, waiting for test results, secondary illnesses, suspected COVID. And I feel like our children have been through so much this past year and a half. And the last thing they need is an increased risk of infection and more missed school. So I appreciate the thoughtful discussion tonight from the board and I hope that everybody continues to advocate for the health and safety of our children. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. At this time, any other public participation? So, okay, I will be closing public participation and I will open up points of information for any board members. Do you, I need to have your hand. So at this time, do any board members have anything that they would like to say?
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
True. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we are going to. Okay, we are going to enter into two executive sessions. So I'm going to entertain a motion that I need someone to read both, because we do not need to go in and come out and go in and come out. We can just go in with one motion and we have to make sure to invite Dr. Willett. So who wants to read?
Okay, Jacob, all right, I move that we enter executive session to discuss an employee's contractual request for lead proposed executive session and for the purpose of a discussion concerning attorney-client communication regarding legal steps for addressing a personnel matter and invite Dr. Willett into said executive session.
Madhu and Duchantel, a second.
Okay, at this time, any board members have any discussion? If not, I will do a roll poll vote. So I'm going to go ahead and start off with the online people. Madhu?
I feel special, aye.
I can't hear you, Dana.
Aye.
Sophia?
Aye.
Me?
Aye.
You go.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm a aye as well, therefore, we will enter into executive session at nine sixteen, inviting Dr. Willett.